He's in there, so we'll get her put there.
This meeting is called to order. Emergency, emergency city council meeting. Excuse us while we get ready here. Down, down just on that? Okay, is that better? Alright. The City Council of the City of Lock Haven is meeting in an emergency session, March 24, 2020, at 3:00 PM at Lock Haven City Hall, 14387 Alamo Road, Lock Haven, Texas, in regard to COVID-19 in Lock Haven. In the close session, if necessary, the meeting will be reopened after the close session. The subjects to be discussed or considered upon any formal action is to be taken are on the agenda. These items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on the agenda. Roll call. Jennifer Williams?
Here.
Jessica Abbey?
Here.
Rodney Allen?
Rodney.
David Campos?
Here.
John Perkins?
Here.
David Campos?
Here.
Let the record reflect that David Campos is joining the meeting by telephone due to concerns about the COVID virus and his current health status. Please join me in the closing of the meetings. Let me give you the word of the United States of America to declare COVID-19 a pandemic. Our nation, our God, and the visible liberty of our citizens is strong. We ask you, oh Father, that you will guide our thoughts and our actions this day as we consider things that concern this city. And as all these things are new to you.
Thank you very much.
The meeting today is being posted on YouTube at the City of Lock Haven. Citizens are being provided an opportunity to submit questions via text. If you're watching on YouTube, you can text 903-875-6501. Please provide your first and last name, and that was your question. These questions will be addressed at the end of our meeting. The meeting is specifically an emergency meeting. That means that we have to prepare certain things because of this COVID virus that we have to address as a council. That's why it's an emergency meeting. The first order of business is to renew the City of Lock Haven Declaration of Global Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency, which I signed into effect last week. This morning, the Department of Commissioners renewed their declaration and signed it into effect. So we are, we are doing the same thing today. I think you all have a copy of that. Okay, I'm going to read this because many, many of our citizens haven't seen or heard exactly what it had to say. So I'm going to read what we are proposing that the council adopt this today. I could only do it for Sundays, now we have to instead. City of Lock Haven Declaration of Global Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency. Whereas the World Health Organization has declared the coronavirus, now designated COVID-19 as a global pandemic on March 11, 2020. And whereas COVID-19 range from mild to severe illness can cause further complications including death. And whereas the COVID-19 virus mainly spreads between people who are in close contact with one another through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. And whereas the continued worldwide spread of COVID-19 presents an imminent threat of widespread illness, which requires emergency action for the protection of the people of the City of Lock Haven. And whereas the vaccination strategies can slow the transmission of the disease. And whereas the Small Business Association has designated COVID-19 as qualifying event for the provision of economic injury disaster loans for businesses and private nonprofits in affected communities. Whereas this declaration activates the city's emergency management plan. And whereas the Mayor of the City of Lock Haven has determined that extraordinary measures must be taken to mitigate the effects of this public health emergency and to facilitate an efficient, rapid, and cooperative response to the emergency. Therefore, it is proclaimed by the Mayor of the City of Lock Haven that the local state of disaster is hereby declared for the City of Lock Haven pursuant to 418.108A of the Texas Government Code. The state of disaster shall continue from the date of this declaration until the City Council of the City of Lock Haven takes further action pursuant to 418.18B of the government code. This declaration of a local state of disaster shall be given prompt to the general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the City Secretary pursuant to 418.1.018B of the government code. This declaration of a local state of disaster activates the City of Lock Haven emergency plan pursuant to 418.018B of the government code. This declaration adopts and incorporates fully the Governor's Executive Order GA-08 and any and all amendments or subsequent orders related thereto. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 418.173, any violation of the declaration may be punishable as a Class C misdemeanor with a fine not to exceed $500. This declaration shall take effect immediately from and after its issuance. Just wanted to ask for the council to give me a motion to accept this declaration.
Do we have like an end date for it?
No. It is, it is in effect until further action by the council. That way, we won't have to meet every 14 or seven days.
So it's currently indefinite until?
It is indefinite until, until we choose to change it. And because things are changing so rapidly, if we, if we accept this just as it is with an end date, with an end date, even if there's something else between then, we're starting to make an emergency session.
Does anybody know what the Governor of the Executive Order will do?
Yes, I have orders.
I mean, just as a reader digest.
Yes, there is a greater digest. Yes, I think he's saying there's some. Here we go. I got it. Correct. How would you put those orders out? It contains four orders. Order number one says, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, every person in Texas shall avoid social gatherings in groups of more than 10 people. Order number two says, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms or massage parlors, provided however that the use of drive-through pickup or delivery options is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the duration of this executive order. Order number three, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall not visit nursing homes or retirement or long-term care facilities unless to provide for the medical assistance. Order number four, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, schools shall not be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think there's, is there still going to be S or anything in this? No. No, it was, it has been postponed indefinitely. We have, we are, this past weekend, we canceled a wedding at the Red Bar. We have asked the church not to have, because it is a public facility, they won't take them off, so we've asked them not to have services there. Because it would be quite a big time for people to post tax. We have not, we have closed our park. Parks have not been closed for this year. So our park is not being used. I know that we have had vision tournaments where most people are not in mind space yet. It's not been an issue yet for us. But I want you to know that these are issues that this council needs to reconsider. We'll go later on and ask you to consider what kind of strategies we need to take. We know, we know from what we've heard that this is going to probably be at least a three-month process. We don't know that it's the month yet, so that'd be special. But the first, the first thing we need to do is to get this declaration in, in place so that we can continue to do the other emergencies. So this is, is really a learning to the public to the fact that we know that there's a pandemic out there and that we're going to do everything we can to mitigate what happens. That we're going to do everything in our power to keep our citizens safe. That's my job, is to help and save the life of this community. That's what I guess we can do today, just to help you do that.
Well, I think I hope it's recorded the Declaration of Global Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency of the City of Lock Haven.
Okay, motion is going to be by Jessica, seconded by Denver. That we adopt this declaration of global disaster. Any other discussion?
I mean, I feel we're invited, blaming the citizens. I mean, you can get out of your house, you know, walk the dog.
Yeah, they're not staying in place.
No, there is not. It is not, there is none yet. When there is one, we will let it. Anything else? Okay, we've got a motion on the table. Seconded, all in favor. David?
Oh, let me take her, I'll be taking her.
It's unanimous decision. It has been adopted. I will ask you off when you see what you're trying to say. Okay, next order of business. We've got a meeting before you go on. You had a comment that it kind of sounds like. So, but just maybe, the one thing I'd love to do is speak more slowly than that today.
I think we're taking it, we did, I think it's hard to work this way. We don't even want to. We're working personal.
We can turn around for a minute. Okay, I don't know what we can do. This is, this is really our test drive of this system. So suggestions are helpful, people out there watching, those know. Yeah, we're going to look at getting a camera to help do this. Okay, the next order of business is the 2020 election. It has been strongly suggested that all of the May 2 elections be postponed until the November 7. I spoke with our attorney today and asked him about the procedure for doing that. We would need to, because we called the election with an ordinance, we would need to, as another ordinance, kind of postpone it until November. I would like, I'd like your input at this point. See what we want to do. It is, what happens in this instance is that we wait until November, current members remain on the council until November, until the November election. And then it becomes a short term for those people who are elected. We go back to the regular scheduled election. She's in there. And if we, if we go to the November cycle, that also is the presidential, that's the big election. So we would be on that same ballot. We probably would have to contract with the county to get us on that ballot. We would not have the election here at City of Ohio. We would go to those, all the designated offices like Kansas City for our election. And of course, the reason for us doing that would be because the close proximity benefits that we're dealing with right now and the safety of our citizens and our staff. Any other comments? I mean, that's me feeling. It's my recommendation as, as the mayor after lots of consideration. At first, I was very reluctant to do that just because we're such a small community and sometimes it feels very strong there about what we do here, that it be just us. And, but after listening to all the things about flattening the herd and exposing people and knowing people like David who are not supposed to be here. But maybe it's in our best interest.
I understand what you're saying. Believe me, especially not believe. But it's people that come in, I don't feel that. I don't know, I don't know.
Well, we let, that one person out of the act of humanity can sanitize that.
Or many people do, we usually think it's short.
Over, if, if we do that, that makes, we have to have. We don't have a choice. We don't need, yes, because I asked that question. We don't have a choice. It has to be general, general, yeah. General, which is like, so. We, if we want to think about it further and I'm going to suggest that we, especially in this week, and then we can, can consider at that time. We would, we would be acting up. All I'm thinking, all I'm also thinking is that if we have a stay-in-place order come out between now and then, what are we? And at that point, we're hanging our twelve-foot trees. I think it's entertaining.
I'd like to move to the title.
Table is on the screen. House, I get that. We have a motion to send it to the table. This, the discussion about the 2020 election until our next meeting. All in favor? David, are you in?
Any favor, I?
Motion is passed. If we get it until the next meeting. The next two items up here are our strategy for next steps, scenarios, and a plan through the twelve weeks that I'm thinking that this is going to, at least last, at least step on. I just want, I'm going to need from you, the council, some ideas, some suggestions about how we need to handle things. When when things come down from the county, because we are in, we're basically under the emergency management team of the county. When things come down from the county, at this point in time, I don't have input from you. I don't have a way of getting input, I guess that's right. But, so one of the things I'd like for us to think about is what could be put, what kind of plan can we put in the place so that everybody knows what's going on and I can get your input in a timely way? And that would be probably the same day that we put, you know, a lot of people in. How can I do that? How can, how can, what can we do to do that? Suggestions?
You can always call me, okay? But I also check my email a lot often every day. And I said, so. Is there a filter helping you? Are you talking about us coming together once a week?
I don't think that, at this point, I think that we need to come together at least every two weeks until, until things settle down. So that we can operate the city where we didn't have our last meeting, where we should have discussed business and we didn't do that. And so, so one of the things that I, that is an excellent matter is to be holding regular scheduled meetings. And we can do that, how we got a YouTube channel, we could do that. Our citizens can participate and know. So we would have to know when to do what your schedules are so that we can just, we'll just set a schedule for next.
Well, what I will tell you is that I don't know what the school has in place for our kids. And we won't know that until, for Friday or Monday. And it's too specific for everybody to hear. Like I talked to three different teachers today, and this is a particular day. And they don't know exactly how everything's going to work. And you won't know until Friday. I can't tell you what I teach our kids at home. But I'm also going to have to be a band teacher, and I have to be a musician teacher. I'm going to have to be an acoller and a coach. Because my kids are going to have to walk all the time. So I don't know what my schedule's going to be yet until Friday.
Well, I would still stop the bad, but we're trying to.
That is very possible. That's what, that's what they were told, something that is very possible. They may be out teaching us. But we won't know how, what their career is or how they're going to do anything in the coming of Friday. That's what I think everybody has to do in the city.
Don't you wait until Monday, get everybody in for the, when somebody's available?
Oh, sorry, we can talk about it at the next next week's meeting.
Okay.
It gives us a better time. Because seeing my job tomorrow, they're making huge changes. So I may not be working. So I, I won't, right, I don't know what.
See how, see how big the consequences is?
Right, and there could be no orders. I mean, there are several counties today that have that thing. So I think that as far as the, the way to get together or discuss, should be discussed.
Do you think we're able to set a time for next meeting?
We can set it and then it may be amended.
Well.
Or you can waste your money.
Because we have to, we have to do it in seventy-two hours. It's seventy-two hours. I don't have any.
Well, it's.
So we, I don't, Friday, next Tuesday.
Well, it could be related, your red date.
Set it for Thursday.
I would say, let's set it for Thursday. So if we set it for five or five thirty, I mean, that way it's after, for sure, everybody's off to work. And you don't have school, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so everybody agreeable, next Thursday, five thirty. At least today. The second, the second. And just to tie in with that, the executive order that Governor Abbott put forward is prior to. Something may happen, and also with regard to the states. So again, it's very clear. Okay, so we're setting our next meeting on the next Thursday, the second, at five thirty. And at that time, you'll also get a chance to think about what kind of strategies. One of the things that, that is on my mind is how do we inform our community, our city, our citizens about what's happening? How do we? Send us some suggestions.
Send it out to the board.
Send it out to the board. They don't know that once a month. But happens in some of the counties. We can be active, like I've done, what we do. So think about it, think about it. Those are things on my mind. Let's go on. We have had some questions about water bills. Do we have to? Does the council want to waive late fees and extension fees? Does the council want to waive late fees and extension fees? Does the council want to adopt an emergency policy and act on water services off of unpaid?
My, my biggest concern is that, is that people will take advantage. And I'm not for, it may be one thing on my piece. But I'm not for. I mean. I, I understand that there might be some hardship pieces. But. We, we need to sort through the other hand and what's going on. I'm not going to just take that as a citizen's, you know, every part of the thing.
How many people?
Right. Right, and, you know.
I mean, I.
There's still one, you know, for regular, they had a lot of people on social security that didn't get a chance.
They're still getting their checks.
Yeah, I knew it, and so did your exact, and I thought people tried to put them down, so perhaps.
If there is some, that has lost some job.
On the case, my best.
Yes, do it on case.
Case, my best, first.
Well, that's kind of what, what our water department has been waiting for. For some direction. And. We don't think that. During these times that. We should be turning to the water hall. And that would be just an emergency policy. That. We can consider. Again, that I'm assuming, but it's something that we need to consider. If we are, if, if we come under a stay at home order. Maybe. Will they put that into our people's handle? Can't do that, but. Some, some of the reasons have been, well. I have to stay home and take care of my kids. Because I think that the city can't handle this. Because of that. So there's, there's a waterfall effect, so. One of the things that. If, if people are watching right now, I'm going to suggest that they contact our department. At City Hall. To discuss. If they are getting some kind of hardship, they need to discuss it with us and let us know. And again, it won't be on case by case business, it's not. One of the questions that at least we had was. About extension fees if they want to. Right now, there's an extension fee, and we can go beyond. The twenty-first and keep it longer. Do you want to waive that? Until there is a order that makes us stay at home and not leave. I don't think that we need, because. I, I just, I unfortunately see it being taken advantage of. I mean. Not much of the extension fee. Thirty, thirty-five dollars.
And the extension is long.
It's expensive to me. The first thing. In addition, they're paying twenty-five dollars.
And then they're turning around.
They're doing water bill.
And then they're doing, and they're doing it on the tent, so.
And so we don't want, we really don't want. This like snowball effect. So that you never be able to pay the water.
As much as a good policy.
Until, now, once they make this stay at home hopefully. And then things might need to change, but.
Then we could call another meeting and we could do a policy. Should I just take this?
I made a motion that we table. Do water bills. Extension fees and etcetera.
Sure. And the discussion, all in favor? David or you and I?
I.
Alright. The next item. Is regarding spending for the city. Because we have, we are losing revenue. Because we have lots of mess. We told, we have. We are canceling our activities. Those that income. The office staff. And I are, are going to be asking that. We have to. We don't spend. Spend ourselves off with citizens. Like. Lawnmowers can. Things of that nature. Even though at, at this date, we may have that money in our corners. Just because we can't spend that money. And we could, we could. We can get out, definitely. Want to share that worry with us. You do that.
Oh, we should, see, that was the right, I was like, oh, so we're.
Yes.
Uh, it is possible, I'm like, uh, they're asking for extension after, but the pilots. Didn't get enough of the different kinds of.
Well, we could do this, we, we are able to make.
That's, that's an option, if you're going to discuss that. I don't know, Jack, we will have other options, as you said, I said, about the original story.
We can, alright, we can. Or one of these. So we should, so. We have, we start on one. People on board. So. But, but as far as. One of, one of the things that. We haven't had in the past is someone who can fix. And having it out of our staff, and can fix this, you know, anything. And so, we're trying to. Deter people from spending, or using, you have to be spending, that's a good idea. So, we're just. It's kind of. Okay. We really don't want to do anything, guys. Just information. The next thing is something that, that. We have been. Exploring with Verizon. And changing our telephone system and our internet. To, to Verizon, which CenturyLink. So we have, we have heard of this proposal. That I'd just like for you to take and we'll discuss it at our next meeting, which you can have ahead of time. If, this proposal. I haven't really, just came, but. It appears that we would be able to cut. Our telephone internet expense in half. And it would also bring more. Our systems of today. We would open up the equipment. It would allow us to expand in the future. So if you take a look at, at these, uh.
What do we know about the rest? I don't even know.
Well. We've got a lot of, I've never been sharing with. So, it's better to upload them. So, we're like.
We can.
Can't, can't look at string over there.
CenturyLink's a lot better than that, other one that goes out all the time, suddenly.
Suddenly.
Suddenly thoughtful. I don't have any problems with CenturyLink, so.
Operator error. Okay. So the table of, yeah. I'll make a motion, we table the Verizon problem next week, second.
I have a question. Okay, does it say phone number?
Yes, the phone number, the phone number stays the same. Especially about that. We have a motion on the table, on the table, because I have it for next week. All in favor? David, any favor?
Any favor?
Okay. Motion's passed. City park is on there because we had. An inquiry about. Because. Because students are out of school right now, you know, we. Wouldn't consider allowing them to go to the park without paying.
I think they're going to. That's exactly.
Well, that's exactly how.
Yeah, but you're not going to, you're not going to keep. I mean, they're already.
I would rather my kids go down and go fishing out there down there, than to be breaking that people's home, and they're realizing. Because that's what's going to start happening, because their kids have, have that. And they ask their parents to stop, and they just, and now, but I'm not saying, I'm just. I was just going to say, obviously, I know, if you can just throw them around, and just to get out of the house, but. And I'm not saying, I'm saying, I'm not saying that there needs to be eighty-five people down there. There was a bunch of people that no, wouldn't to keep the, but. I don't see how it would be any more for sugar.
Now, you can force. Already can force. If you say no, they've got, you, they've got to pay to go down there. I don't know.
Well, I think that has been. That has been the case. All along.
Technically, we don't start charging the money anyways.
Well, there's no money, there's not.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so. Technically, I mean, people have gone down there all these other years before Maggie Duckett's charge.
Right, and even Captain. Kids, and whatnot, all, um, speaking. And. But. I've had, I've had discussions with the chief of all, also. And if we feel like too many people are starting to kind of be. Close, or, that it goes to harm in itself.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's reasonable, yeah, but, I mean. You've got to think of all these people that are stuck at home and not doing anything. And, you know. It's. They're going to go insane. I agree with you.
I don't think there's need to do it.
I mean, I agree, if, if. If either her officer sees there's, you know, twenty people down there, then yes. That's one thing you might, you know, make at least half of them go, because it's melon, and there's a sand, but other than that.
Okay, I don't think we need to. This part. This next item has to do with community events. Generally asked, but we, uh.
What I think I'm going to do is I'm just going to postpone it, even if it's after Christmas. Even if it's October.
Usually is.
I mean, if it gets to be July or August, but even if it's May, or, you know, um. Because that would be something fun for everybody to do after all this is settled down. So, I, at this point, it's a completely keeps me, and I'm just going to postpone it. So, if, if everybody's okay with that. I mean, I don't have any problems canceling it, but hopefully, maybe God, say the right way. Things will be settled back down, and maybe we can do something about the community and everybody can get together and do. David, leave your phone. Thank you. So if everybody's okay with that, I'd say.
Uh, the same thing goes for the town hall meeting that's scheduled. We don't want to totally say we're not ever going to have one, you know, because we. It's very beneficial for people to get together and discuss it, so. That also is, is going to be a first time. Anything else that you can think of at this point? Regarding security and health for the community that we need to think about. If not. Then. I'm going to open this up to the citizen comment, because already has been. Getting couple comments up there, you know. So I just want citizens to know that this item provides the opportunity for citizens to address the city council. By state law, comments by the mayor or passing members on any item not on the agenda. Will be limited to statements and specific information through response to acquiring. A recitation of existing policy, in response to an inquiry. Or, or a proposal to replace the subject on the agenda. Let if you have questions, I'd like to comment. So the first one is Nancy Hubbard, who lives on Anamo Road. She says, I've seen a lot of people on social media taking steps to provide for their families during a potentially extended shelter in place or for the state or country. These steps include planting early harvest gardens and livestock. Giving temporarily relaxables on livestock and what happens to allow for eating chickens. I had thrown multiple stores for four days in a row where I was finally able to buy their eggs on Sunday. I can't be the only one this has happened to. If we had to eat chickens, we would have our own eggs and not be so dependent on the supply chain that is in the process of breaking down.
We can actually address this as well.
It's not, well, but we need.
We can put it on a dinner for a future, for a, for a future meeting, so let's go.
So. Should we have another agenda for next week?
Yeah, everybody.
We will put it on the agenda for next week.
The next comment is also from Nancy Hubbard. And her comment is, I am R and R, and also training national incident management. I would love to see the committee of residents form for emergency management and emergency response.
So our, our emergency response right now is, is with, is with the county. We don't really, we don't have. An official response team. In the city. But I would be open to discussing that with them. If she would like to come in, or call me on the phone. I don't have to visit. Call me on the phone. No visiting, no visitations. City Hall is, City Hall is closed, you can't, can't visit anywhere. Okay. Next.
Um, the next comment is Nancy Hubbard, she doesn't have a question, she just wanted us to know, because she feels good. And the audio is very static. I've had probably a half dozen comments like that for this session. Unfortunately, our equipment hasn't hooked up, right? It's something there about time.
Not only that, I think it's open for working hours.
You have to get thousands of hours.
I don't think it's been uploaded to video all the time.
It's why I like you. It's just, it's just being.
It's just, it's just being, we're, we're, we really upload, we, we, we also, just like, watching.
Oh, we, we do, we do record, we do record all of our, all of our meetings, and so, um, Chief Tucker says that following this meeting, he will upload the city's version, kind of the city's version of this, of this meeting, so that if you weren't able to hear it, we can hear it better. That's all we have. Anybody else have any other input? Not on there, it's option two. All in favor?
Favor.
We are adjourned. Hi, David.
Hi, guys, that's good.